I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to the Shreveport City Council meeting. We asked that this time if you have your cellphones, if you would be kind enough to turn them off or put them on silence. We're going to ask that Chief Walbuck, I think he was here, we're going to ask that he would come and lead us in prayer. We're going to ask Councilman Nicholson to lead us in the pledge. Let's pray. Father, we come to you now and thank you for this day, thank you for the rain that we have. We know we need it, we just thank you for the blessings of that. We ask that you would go with us in this meeting, be with everyone that is in decision-making positions, Lord, that's been elected to be there, Father. They're there because of you, and we ask you give them wisdom from above to make those right decisions. We ask that everything we say and do here today will bring you honor and glory, and we ask it all in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Here.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Busher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Gold.
Thank you. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and special meeting Monday, August 8th, 2022, and the city council meets special meeting Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. Does any council member have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guest not to exceed 15 minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite to the podium the President and Chief Executive Officer, Willis Knighton, Jeff Fielder. Mr. Fielder.
Mr. Fielder, we appreciate you being here today. We understand that you're here to answer questions and perhaps express some concerns about the city's retirement, health insurance, and invite you to do that.
Yes, sir. You want me to start now?
Please.
Be happy to. My name is Jeff Fielder, I'm president and CEO for Willis Knighton Health System. I'm here today on behalf of the 7,000 employees and over 700 providers who are employed by Willis Knighton, many of whom are citizens of here at Shreveport. I'm also here at the request of several city employees and retirees that are concerned about the health insurance decisions being made by the city's healthcare trust fund board regarding the health insurance that's going to be offered to them in 2023. As we understand it, those same, some of those options are going to present financial penalties to the city employees and retirees that choose to go to Willis Knighton, and that's really concerning because the vast majority of the city employees and retirees choose to go to Willis Knighton. Willis Knighton is the only locally owned and operated not-for-profit health system in Shreveport, Bossier. We have a tremendous investment in Shreveport. All of our profits are retained in and shared with Northwest Louisiana. We don't send our profits to corporate headquarters in New Orleans or Dallas. Willis Knighton is the second-largest non-governmental employer in North Louisiana with over 7,000 employees, and next to Barksdale Air Force Base, we are one of the largest economic engines in this area. Our state-of-the-art facilities and technologies provide the most convenient access to care and it's unparalleled in our region. Five hospitals in Shreveport, Bossier, four emergency departments in Shreveport, Bossier, seven urgent cares, four work cares, and the replacement value of our facilities and technology is estimated to be over $3 billion. So needless to say, Willis Knighton is invested in Shreveport. I'm here today to tell you that Willis Knighton wants to work with the city to assure the city's employees and retirees who want to go to Willis Knighton can do so without financial penalties. We've informed the city's health plan trust fund board that we are willing to work with them to make those choices available. On April 20th, Willis Knighton was given the opportunity to make a 15-minute presentation to the health plan trust fund board. We were told during that meeting by city officials that we would be given the opportunity to participate in a formal request-for-proposal process for the city's health insurance business. That invitation never came. At some point, the simple solution, we believe, is for the board or the city council not to make any changes to the city's health insurance options for 2023 and initiate a formal, transparent request-for-proposal process. This would permit anybody interested, insurance carriers and providers, to bid in a fairly, in a fair and equitable process for the city's healthcare coverage. Willis Knighton has suggested that the city make multiple options available to their, to their employees and retirees, allowing them to have the ability to choose what's best for them and their family without financial penalty. We are willing to assist the city in structuring these plans in order for them to meet their financial goals, the savings that they're trying to obtain. But be that as it may, whatever the board decides or whatever this council decides, Willis Knighton is going to continue to serve the people in this community the best of our ability. Thank you. And I'll be here of any questions if you have any.
Mr. Fielder, I'll just say how much I appreciate your time and how much I appreciate Willis Knighton. Three of my children were born in Willis Knighton hospitals. You've saved at least one, one life of a family member of mine, felt like so many people in this community. I'm deeply grateful to you and to the thousands of employees at Willis Knighton. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fielder, and thank you for Willis Knighton. I just had a couple of questions. You said that there was no RFP that was requested?
No, sir. We were never given a chance to participate in a formal request-for-proposal process. We were invited to participate in a, a presentation on our options, but never a formal RFP.
How you doing? Thank you.
Was there, was there an RFP sent out for that, Mr. Brown or Mr. Whitehorn?
The RFP was conducted by the benefits consultant, Gallagher. So Gallagher ran the numbers, did a discount analysis on both providers that was done. And I know the CFO mentioned they only had 15 minutes. I'll just say for the record, both providers had the same amount of time, the same presentation, same information. However, Willis Knighton came in $1.6 million higher than what was offered by Blue Cross. So just for the record.
What is the overall cost? $1.6 million of what?
I would have to look at the, go back and look at the presentation, but what, what we actually did was look at a, an analysis of all of the expenses based on the prior year of the employees, took that analysis of that expense, put it into their discounts based on what they were offering, based on what was the proposals. After looking at what we've already spent, based on plugging the numbers and the discounts in provided by Blue Cross Blue Shield, as well as Aetna, the cost for Willis Knighton was $1.6 million higher based on what our spend was for 2021.
So there's been some correspondence that I've seen, of course. As you can imagine, our, our emails and phones have been kind of burning up about this. Did y'all provide, did y'all have the adequate information that you needed to provide in your 15-minute presentation in April? I guess what I'm saying is, in one, one email I saw, y'all weren't given the, the complete census of retirees and active employees, so therefore your numbers could have been skewed. Is that, is that right?
Yes, sir. That is correct. And the way the normal RFP process works is you're given the opportunity to make an initial response, and then after questions and answers with the city and the benefits consultants, you're able to refine your quote. We were never given that opportunity to come back and refine our quote, and so I don't know what, how they calculated the difference, but, or the increase or whatever, but that's, that was done on partial information.
I think we have three very good healthcare providers in the city of Shreveport. I will say this, 23 years on the fire department for me, I've had four aggressive skin cancers, one that is lost, I've lost the end of my nose over and have a skin graft because of it. And I'm sure it's due to the fact I'm 50 years old, so 51. So I'm sure it's due to the fact of the exposure of the chemicals that I was exposed to over that time. My biggest concern is, and this is something that, that I need to get with the CAO and CFO about, is what happens to these firefighters. We had, we've had in the last 10 years 35 firefighters that have died of cancer. Right now, the, the International Firefighters Association says that it's the leading cause of death for firefighters and retired firefighters is cancer. And we've had 20 that, that actively have had cancer or that are in remission. That number's only going to start to go up. And I just want to make sure that what, what our retirees, not just firefighters, but all the retirees signed up for, they're going to get. And I could only imagine, my mother died in 2017 of cancer, and in the middle of her treatment, if she was forced because of monetary issues, because she couldn't work, to have to switch cancer treatment in the middle of it, or any other kind of treatment in the middle of it, would be, would be pretty devastating. Regardless, if the option's still there, it would probably end up costing more. So I just, I'm, I'm kind of erring with you that, that I would, you know, I wish that we had, I just hate to see us save money for this. It just doesn't, it just doesn't bode well with me, and maybe it's because of my history, maybe it's because of my past, I don't know. But I, I wish that we would have had a real official RFP process put into place. And I'm, from what I'm hearing, there really was no official request for proposal. So, and that's not, that's not a slide at Osters. I'm sure there's several firefighters that go to Osters right now and are getting treatment. I'm sure there's some that go to Christus. My mother went to Christus, that are getting good treatment as well. But I hate to see us have to switch in the middle. That's, that's something that I'm, I'm not really for. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to kind of add a little bit to this conversation.
Yes, sir.
You know, we went through this last year, similar processes, similar questions. This option that Mr. Fielder is talking about is only one suite of options that we're planning to offer for employees and retirees this year. That was a narrow network option. It was not for the entire healthcare coverage, and I don't want people to get confused with that. This is only for a narrow network option. And we were introduced to this by Mr. Fielder and Brian Crawford. He asked the mayor and I to come and visit with them, and we went to their office, and we sat down with them in Aetna, and they presented a proposal to us. We told them that proposal would have to come before the healthcare trust fund board. Ashner had also mentioned prior to them that they also had a narrow network option that they wanted to offer to our employees to try to provide options for retirees and employees to help on their insurance coverage. Both hospitals had a narrow network option. We visited with them, we invited them to the board to present those options along with Ashner, and they did that. And the board made a decision based on what was presented and what the consultants advised Last year, we tried to introduce an EQUIP program, an employee group waiver program to our employees, I mean to our retirees that were eligible. At that time, Willis Knighton administration told us that they would accept that option. Later on, then the retirees came back and told us that they were not going to accept that option. So there was a little confusion there. We went back and forth. It's ironic that in the program that Mr. Felder presented, it had an EQUIP option in it, something they don't accept. They told us that, the reason they didn't accept it is because, as he said, they're the largest provider in Northwest Louisiana, and they were not consulting or Blue Cross didn't negotiate with them. So we went back and we assured Mr. Felder, the mayor and I, that we would get Blue Cross to negotiate. We were told that Blue Cross tried to negotiate. They said Blue Cross didn't negotiate. Mr. Felder himself told me that Blue Cross told them that they were the largest carrier in the state, and for that reason, they didn't have to negotiate. He said that they're the largest provider and they should negotiate. So it's a back and forth here. The bottom line is, we talked about this last year, this council. We told you what our deficit was, $13 million that's coming out of the general fund. We also agreed, this council agreed to spend an additional $5.3 million last year for health coverage for our employees and retirees. And we all said we can't continue going in that direction. For the last three administrations, we have been absorbing that coverage that should have been borne by employees. At some point, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. Now, we have not agreed, this healthcare trust fund board, I want everybody to understand this, have not made any agreements on reducing anybody's coverage. We have a meeting coming up on September 7th where we're going to talk about all the options that's going to be available and the cost for those options. At that point, the board will make some decisions on what options will be available. We're not trying to take anything away from anybody. I told Mr. Felder and I've told the board, I've been with Willis Knighton Health System since 1978. All of my doctors are in that Willis Knighton system. I'm not interested in going away from Willis Knighton. I'm going to continue seeing my doctors. I don't plan to move, but I got to do what's right for the city and for our employees and make those options available to them. I appreciate you having 7,000 employees and trying to do what you can to continue getting that service. But we have to make some tough decisions, folks, on what we're going to do with this healthcare. And we don't have the funds to continue spending $5.3 million here or $13 million out of the general fund. That's the bottom line. I could go on, I've got plenty of talk points. I sat on my patio this weekend, not knowing I was going to have this crowd here today. But it was raining, I didn't have nothing else to do. So I sat down and I started making notes on what we have done to try to provide adequate coverage for our employees and retirees. And I got about three pages of them, but I'm not going to take the time today here to read all of them. But we have worked with Willis Knighton, we're going to continue to work with Willis Knighton. We work with Ashner, we're willing to work with anybody that's got a good plan. But the council, we, we, we are proposing some things to you all. That letter should be coming with, after the next meeting, is that right, Danielle?
Yes, sir.
That's going to address this coverage. The one thing that I will tell you that I have proposed is to prevent retirees from jumping on and off the plan as it will. That will be one of the proposals that we'll make. Right now, retirees can leave the plan and come back at any time. That's not an industry standard, that's not a best practice. And so we got to fix some things too, as we go through this process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond to, to the chief, I will tell you today that I think if we had been given all of the information upfront, chief, I think that we could have gotten our bid to be as competitive or more competitive than our competitors. And what I would like to say is, I think that we ought to be giving the city employees and retirees a choice. So if we're moving to a narrow network plan, let's put Willis Knighton's narrow network next to, next to the Blue Cross narrow network and let them choose. That's all I'm asking, with no financial penalty. Because the way a narrow network works is, if you funnel it into one place, you tend to save a little bit more money. So on the traditional plan, you have to go up on the premiums and the out-of-pocket expense if you choose to go to another provider. So there's a financial disincentive in order. If we don't get the narrow network or if we don't have a narrow network product to compete with the Blue Cross product, then it costs more to go to Willis Knighton.
And just for clarification, Mr. Fielder, I will say, we did send the updated information for you guys to, to, we provided the updated numbers for you guys to provide the updated discount or the, the updated savings. So, so all of the information was provided to you guys before you made your final presentation.
Who did you send that to, Mr. Brown?
I think everybody, I can't say exactly who it was sent to, but I, I know it was sent to the board, as you guys could not give us your final cost without us giving you all of the information needed as far as the, the census. So I think you guys did have that, Mr. Fielder.
I checked with Mr. Crawford before I came here, and I also checked with our Aetna representatives, and nobody received any other figner, figures other than what we had at that April 20th meeting.
But, but, Mr. Chairman, sure, I thank you so much for taking the time to appear. I will say for myself that I'm keeping an open mind about what the administration is going to present. This is really complicated. I understand everything that's being said today, so I guarantee that, that there are other people who are in the same boat. I need to be educated.
Yes, sir.
By the administration, by Representative Willis Knighton. I agree with Chief Whitehorn that we can't maintain the status quo in terms of the burden on our general fund, and I certainly want Willis Knighton to be part of the conversation and, and part of the options that are available to retirees, but we've got to come together and work something out that doesn't provide, impose the fiscal burden that we're suffering under president.
Totally agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other council member have any guests? I think I was told that Mr. Foster Campbell was in the audience, is he? He was here when he left. Ms. Whitehorn, did any recognitions, awards from administrative, administration at this time?
Mr. Chairman, at tomorrow's council meeting, you're going to be voting on numerous appointments. Mr. Reginal Mims is one of those confirmations. He's a member, former member of the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority, and he's here today and available for questions.
Are there any questions on Mr. Mims?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mims.
Thank you, Mr. Mims.
Okay.
Left and right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the director of airports, have we worked out a way for him to be interviewed by us at all as far as Zoom? I know he's not going to be here in person. Have we worked out anything where, where he can at least be part of the meeting?
I'm not aware of that. Councilman Busher, I thought he would be here. I haven't been involved in that process.
I, I spoke with someone with the airport authority today, and they said that he would not be here. There was an email that circulated amongst council members a couple of weeks ago, and there was a question about being Zoom, and I don't, I responded back, I don't know if anybody else did, but I was told today that there may be a, a problem IT-wise with him being able to Zoom in, so I'm not prepared to vote on this until I'm able to talk to Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Does any member have any concerns for property standard for Mr. Green? Any concerns for Mr. Green?
Oh, Mr. Green, I know you asked me, and I said, no, this is not in my district, it's closed. Any update you can give on Fairfield Oaks condominiums and when that might be moved forward, I would appreciate a drive-by on a regular basis, and it looks just like it did after it burned down.
I will, I'll be able to get that for you.
Okay.
Get it to me first, though, because you know.
Okay.
That's been a problem going on for a while, and I think that what we were told is that the insurance companies, there's various homeowners insurance on that property, and that was the holdup. But if you're able to get us any information on that, that would be great.
Okay.
The Family Dollar and Dollar Tree stores, I think, Councilman Nicholson, you all asked about that before, and the upkeep of the property, does they go through, you all are NPC?
Uh, zoning.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, they, they have not gotten any better since the last time we talked about it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for your help the other day.
You're welcome.
Lot better.
Thank you. Mr. Clark is not here, but we have a master report, master plan committee report today.
Stephen Jean, Deputy Director of Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adam Bailey will come forward and give you a report on short-term rentals. Many of you are familiar with, with Airbnb and Verbo and other platforms, and he's going to talk to you about the, the current ordinance that we have and some recent changes to the ordinance and what we're doing in, in the area of implementation.
Mr. Jean?
Yes.
Could you all address that concern to, with the Family Dollar and the Dollar Tree stores in there? Do we need to just send you all the addresses for those?
Yes, if you, if you could do that, we will take care of it. I know that we had some work on it, but, and had some improvement, but we'll just have to hit it again.
I think it's pretty much everyone's isolation.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll get with our zoning administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jean, members of council, chief. I'm going to talk to you real quick about short-term rentals. What am I going to talk about? I'm going to tell you who regulates short-term rentals, or as I refer to as STRs. I'm going to give you a timeline of those regulations in Shreveport. I'm going to tell you how they're regulated in Shreveport. I'm going to tell you about the proposed COTEX amendments that you'll be seeing tomorrow, possible future short-term rental regulations that y'all talked about at your last meeting, and then also how citizens in Shreveport can stay informed on short-term rentals. Who in the state regulates short-term rentals? Jefferson Parish, Mandeville, New Orleans, Shreveport, St. Tammany Parish. Baton Rouge will see short-term rentals in front of their planning commission in September. It'll go in front of their city council in October. Bossier is forming study groups on how they can regulate short-term rentals in the future. In the U.S., when we looked at our regulations, where did they come from? We looked at Auburn and Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Torrance, California, Richmond, Virginia, Des Moines, Iowa, Chattanooga, Denver. A lot of the language in our ordinance is very similar to Spokane, Washington, in the terms and the types of permits that they regulate. How many short-term rentals are in Shreveport? In August of 2017, there were zero. In August of 2021, there was approximately 130. February of 2022, there was 150. That's after they became regulated. So in February of 2022, only 30 were registered. Today, there's about 190 that are operating in Shreveport, and as of today, only 79 are registered. The timeline of these regulations, if I go back to 2017, when the Unified Development Code was adopted, short-term rental did not exist in the UDC. It was called a transient vacation rental, and in order to get a transient vacation rental, you needed a special use permit. However, you also needed approval by the director of finance at that time. There was no pathway, so therefore between 2017 and 2020, zero special use permits came in for short-term rentals. So in December of 2020, city council, y'all got with Mr. Clark and said, hey, let's look at short-term rentals, let's see how these can be regulated in Shreveport. So between January and May of 2021, we did some forums. We talked to, via Zoom, here in the council chambers, we talked with the Realtors Association, we talked with people who were actually doing short-term rentals, and we came to some agreements and some definitions on how it can be regulated. In June of 2021, it went before the NPC. In July of 2021, city council voted on it, and in August of 2021, it was implemented in where it was required to get a short-term rental permit. In August of 2022, we went live with a digital platform that not only the NPC uses, but revenue uses, as well as the Shreveport Bossier Tourism Bureau. It's called RentalScape. That went live this month, and also the first proposed COTEX amendments are going for you tomorrow, as I mentioned earlier. So how short-term rentals regulated in Shreveport, if you look at this graphic, there's, this is only a small number of different platforms that people can use to list their short-term rental. Airbnb, Booking.com, and Verbo are the biggest. Most of them fall underneath an umbrella of one of those companies, but some of them are very specific. If you see Kid &amp; Co., that's specifically geared to families with kids. Bring Fido, those are short-term rentals that are geared towards pets. But Airbnb, Booking.com, Verbo, those are the biggest ones. And currently, right now, Article 23 of the Shreveport UDC regulates short-term rental. It's defined as either residential dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit, or any room they're in that is available for rent for a term of less than 30 consecutive calendar days, and that excludes bed, breakfast, and single-room occupancy. What is the requirement? Is that if you're a property owner and you wish to operate a short-term rental, you have to get a short-term rental permit. And there are two types. There's type A and there's type B. A type A is an owner-occupied short-term rental. That means the home is primarily used where one or more bedrooms are rented while the homeowner remains in the house. Accessory dwelling units like carriage houses, garage apartments, those are also classified as a type A. Type A are Type A are administratively approved, and they allow a maximum of two adults per room. A type B is a home owned by a person who doesn't live on-site and is primarily used for visitors. There are two types, B1 and B2. B1 are approved administratively, and they can accommodate up to 10 adults. A B2 requires special exception use approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's where a host would want to allow more than 10 guests. Or if someone came and applied for a B1 short-term rental permit, however, there was an existing B1 within 500 feet, that 500 feet would trigger a special exception use approval before the ZBA. What are the proposed amendments before you that you'll decide on tomorrow? We, right now, the way the language reads is that any short-term rental within 500 feet would trigger a special exception use. However, remember, short-term type As are administratively approved, and that's where the owner is occupying the space as well. So they would be exempt, downtown would be exempt from the B2 triggers. Also, we're creating a waiver for type B2 permits on a case-by-case basis. Let's say on a particular street, and we have one of these in front of us right now, that are in Broadmoor, but Yuri Drive separates the two short-term rentals. Well, those two short-term rentals aren't going to have an immediate impact on each other. However, they're still within the 500-foot radius. So on a case-by-case basis, NPC staff will look at it, give that to the Executive Director, and then he can decide on whether they should be waived on having to go in front of the ZBA or not. I know Councilwoman Fuller asked this. What are some future COTEX amendments that you can look at, whether it be at the NPC level or even through City Council? You can limit the number of residential or rental properties within that location. Right now, the code provisions are 500 feet. Do those need to be expanded to 1,000 feet? Or do they need to be lessened to maybe 300 feet or 200 feet? Right now, the special exception use approval standards are very, are not specific to short-term rentals. They are across the board when it comes to those approval standards. In the UDC, there are three types of special use, special exception uses. Beauty parlors, manufactured homes, and short-term rentals. And when you use the same standards for all of those, well, all those are three different uses. Maybe there should be specific approval standards for short-term rentals. We can limit the type of structure that they're in, the length of stay. And when it comes to residency, I wanted to point out that some cities require that short-term rental properties have a primary resident apply in order to prevent investors who don't live in the city. So that means when they come with their application, they have to show proof that they live in Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Right now, there's nothing like that on the book. So actually, somebody who maybe lives in Memphis and owns a lot of property here can open up short-term rentals. There's no regulations on that. How can citizens stay in Shreveport, stay informed, or how can they register? This is a couple of snapshots of our current website. There's a couple of ways to get to our short-term rental page, our website, shreveportcaddoNPC.com. Just like a Google search bar, you can go in there, you can type in short-term rentals, hit the magnifying glass, it'll take you to the page. You can go to how do I? That'll open a page, apply for, move on down to short-term rental permit, over to more services. That'll take you to the short-term rental page. If you want to apply online, scroll down, hit the green button, and that takes you to the Deckard Technologies page that I've talked about earlier, where you can apply, you can update your information, you can renew your license. Also, on the MPC's page, you can get an application checklist of what's going on, hit related links. There's a map that shows all the short-term rental permits that are in the city. You can click on a button, it can show you where that buffer is. So if you're wanting to apply for one, and you know whether you would need a special exception use or not, you can go to that map, you can see what the fees are, this different type of rental types, which I talked about earlier, is B1 and B2. And then approve short-term rental listings. This is important for not only, you know, potential applicants, but also people who are having problems maybe with a short-term rental. They can go to this listing, click on the link. It lists every single short-term rental that is in the city. It gives you the address, it gives you the permit number, it gives you the contact name of their emergency. Most important, the contact number if there are problems. I know that was a lot of information in a quick amount of time, but hopefully, y'all got an overview of short-term rentals and what's happening. Be glad to answer any questions.
You mentioned an amendment that would allow the Executive Director to forego approval by the ZBA.
It will, it will give him a waiver that basically says, currently, right now, that way, that distance requirement is 500 feet. There are some instances, I gave an example of maybe, you know, I'll use Oakley for example. There might be one on, even though I know there's no residential on Oakley, but Ardmore might have, or Philadelphia Street might have a short-term rental on the west side, and one might come on on the east side. Now, it's less than 500 feet, but you have Yuri Drive in between. Where really will the one on the east side impact the one on the west side? So that would give him the, a waiver ability to go before the ZBA.
What standard will he apply in making that decision?
It'll be on a case-by-case basis. We'll look at topography, we'll look at close proximity. It could be that, you know, you have two streets in between where the short-term rental is, and it's maybe 475 feet, but it hits that trigger. Yet, one that's existing will have no impact on the one that's proposed.
Colleagues, I just want to remind you that this is the one thing that was inhibiting an Airbnb that came before us two weeks ago.
Correct.
Where we were determining whether or not it could go on the appeal from the neighbors, when if that one thing hadn't been in place, it would have been a use by rights. She wouldn't have had to have been here in the first place for that. I honestly feel like, oh, before I do that question, will you explain the cost of fee, whether or not it's an annual fee, and what it actually covers back to your bureaucratic processes?
So the permit is for two years. Type A administrative is $150 fee, a type B is a $250 fee. It's renewed every two years. What was the final question?
Well, that was it. So I know that the fees are a lot higher in other cities, that's, that's the thing. But what does that cover on your end?
Administrative, you know, for us doing the staff report, us doing the research to look at, you know, what parameters it falls in. We're having to verify that they, along with revenue, but, you know, do they have their occupational license, do they have the correct insurance? You know, they have a checklist, we have to verify all that information, get back with the applicant. It's a lengthy, timely process.
Right. So a cynic might say that you all are regulating something that is crowdsourced-regulated on behalf of making sure that we're able to get the other things we need as far as revenue, but you're having to take these fees to pay for the time that y'all have done to do the job that you gave yourselves.
One could view it that way.
My other question is, did you all do any kind of housing impact study when you all were looking at this? I know you talked to the Realtors Association, you spoke with people that were already doing Airbnbs, you spoke with neighbors, they got a survey. But my question is, did we actually look at how this is impacting our actual housing? Did you look at it on your own with community development? We know that we have a dearth in affordable housing. Some of the areas that people are going into do these because they can make money off of them, which is great. Like, some people would argue that that could be housing inventory for people that need it, and it's been taken off of the, it's been taken away. Now, the reason to have the regulations and to have like the feet apart for density of them would be exactly that. But did you all do that study to prove that that was the case?
Specifically that study, no. We did reach out when we were doing all of the public outreach. Like I said, we met with the Realtors, we reached out to community development, we reached out to Bobby Collins with the Housing Authority to see what impacts, you know, or not necessarily direct impacts, but their input on how a short-term rental ordinance, I guess, would affect them.
See, I'm thinking that we could have probably relaxed on some of this until we actually knew how it was really in hard data impacting our housing inventory. Because what we've done is like maybe $100 a year, and you consider the kind of money you're going to make off of your property. Maybe that's not that big of a deal. But a lot of people are saying, a lot of people are just seeing this as a hardship that we're putting on them because we want to get our, you know, we want to get our pound of flesh off of people, especially at a time when people are trying to just make some money on a cottage industry.
Yes, ma'am, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just asking. It's not your fault. You're just doing what you thought y'all were supposed to do. I think on our end, I think that we might have made a mistake by adopting this hastily last year. It happened on the same day that we were looking at the, at some other fairly controversial stuff. I think we just voted on it to be done with the meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. So there's, there's a street in Ms. Fuller's district, for instance, that it's a block, and on that block, there's three or four duplexes, and there's a single-family home that is a VBRO or Airbnb, or whatever you want to call it. I guess my, one thing, the 500 feet, to me, I don't like it because this, you know, there's duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. And let's say that that landlord wanted to rent out one of the upper duplex, or the lower duplex, or something like that. In my mind, a short-term is no different than a six, it is different, but in my mind, it wouldn't be, you couldn't do it. Let's say you've got, you know, the neighbor next door has a duplex, and they're renting out one of them as a, and a lot of people are doing that now for like healthcare workers and things like that. And that's how they're making their income to make their mortgage, because a lot of cases, people weren't renting anymore. So I just think we need to look at that. I'm assuming that it doesn't matter what the zoning for the particular area is, that this still is going to be in effect, the 500 feet, right?
The way the, the distance requirements, you're correct. Short-term rentals are allowed in all residential zoning districts. They're allowed anywhere that residential is allowed. So in even some commercial zoning districts, you know, you can have residential above commercials. So you could have a short-term rental there. Some ways of trying to lessen the restrictions, because we've received calls on both ends. People want the 500 feet to increase because they don't want short-term rentals around them. And then other people who want short-term rentals want it decreased because they're like, hey, this person was administratively approved. How am I any different from them when they came in first, yet I'm coming in right now? One of the ways we're looking at that is if it is a homeowner who wants to rent out those bedrooms, and they classify as a type A, that wouldn't trigger a distance requirement. They can immediately come in, that type A would be administratively approved. But looking at ways to possibly lessen that is a, the distance requirements, it does make sense. But, you know, the, you know, it's a double-edged sword. When you lessen the requirements, you might get the phone calls saying, hey, why didn't you allow, or why didn't you allow the NPC to let a short-term rental come within, you know, 300 feet?
I've gotten this call. I just think that, to me, as a property owner, that just because somebody beat me to the punch on putting in a VBRO, like what you said, it doesn't make a whole bunch of sense that the neighbor next door has, you know, a duplex and one apartment is a VBRO. I can't rent my apartment over here. I've got one rented, but I don't have the other one, and I want to have the option to use this as a, it is a VBRO. I can't because my neighbor already beat me to the punch.
Or I can't because the people in the townhouse next to me don't want me to. And I would have been able to if it hadn't been for the one that was down the street already.
When the ordinance was originally written, we gave six months. As I showed on the graphic, only, actually, it was 30 people applied. We did our best to let people know, saying, hey, get your application in, you won't have to go in front. Either it was mine out of sight, or they just chose not to. Now, with Deckard coming on board, we're able to actually see where those 190 properties are. We get a list. We can send them. We've sent them courtesy letters, letting them know of the 110 that haven't been, aren't registered. Some are going to trigger the 500-foot rule. Does that need to be shortened? That's the, I guess, the $64,000 question.
I think that's a, that's a question that, I mean, we probably need to discuss this, you know, the further we go, because I agree with Councilwoman Fuller that, you know, we wouldn't even have been here two weeks ago if this had been different. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate you.
Yes.
Appreciate the presentation.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there, did everyone receive their budget actual financial report?
It'll be about tomorrow, Chairman.
Thank you. We'll have it tomorrow. Public hearings, none. Mr. Whitehorn, will there be any legislation added tomorrow?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items. And at this particular time, the Vice Chair will control the list and time.
Lois Mayberry.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to address you. I'm Lois Mayberry, a volunteer with Hope House, a day shelter serving those who experience homelessness, many who are my friends. St. Luke's Episcopal Mobile Medical Ministry, which meets the medical needs of my friends and Board Chair of Settled-In Village, a nonprofit that owns property in West Caddo Parish and is working to build tiny homes as affordable quality residence for my friends. For the last five years, a group of representatives from the various agencies that serve these friends meet monthly to brainstorm on their needs. At this open meeting, our representatives from the various day shelters, housing shelters, mental health agencies, VOA, Salvation Army, Hope Connection, Street Outreach Team, Shreveport Police, nonprofits, and other people who just care about the compassionate treatment of our friends. Our meeting has two main focuses, to share what services are available and to discuss difficult, specific problems of our friends in most need. Our meetings are informative and tempt to problem solve. We work together to learn the needs during the most acute stages of the COVID crisis and informally form strategies to address and carry out fulfilling the needs. We tackle solutions to environmental problems caused by heat, cold, rain, and stormy weather. Because our friends are so transient, we work to be sure that they are being served when they choose to move from one agency to another. This is an important focus, especially when we consider the number of our friends who have died in the last year because of difficult circumstances. All the representatives at the meeting either work or reside in Shreveport and care about our city. Recently, we have been, become aware of an increase in the panhandling by our friends in the new areas, in new areas. And this was discussed at our August 2nd meeting. When the kind people of Shreveport meet the immediate needs of these friends, it keeps them away from the long-term help they really need. We also brainstormed on those friends who have hoarding issues and are moved from one camping situation to another. We are aware of their severe mental illness and that they lead, and that this has led them to their manner of living. At our meeting, we discussed resolutions to these situations. We'd like to ask the city to consider developing and airing public service announcements about panhandling, help the public become more aware that meeting short-term needs keeps our friends away from the long-term solutions, make the public aware of more lasting ideas to help them. As our severe mental ill friends, there needs to be a more concerted effort towards a city-sponsored and funded resource center to coordinate all the needs of these friends. The current solution of jail time for minor problems like trespassing or short stays in emergency rooms is not the answer. Alan Graham, an expert in housing those experiencing homelessness in Austin, Texas, believes the true reason for homelessness is the lack of family and community support of individuals who have experienced a loss of relationships. Developing kind, compassionate relationships have proved to be the key in finding correct housing solutions and meeting the public needs of these friends.
This is a time.
Ma'am, Ms. Lois, do you have anything else that you'd like to add very quickly?
My last sentence was, I'm here today to ask City Council to focus towards providing this community relationship with all our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you for my time.
Jav Fielder. Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Ashley, and I'm coming to speak on what's going on with downtown and the homelessness. Downtown, we used to sleep all through there. But thanks to Liz, she's making it even harder. Where it's like that if we doesn't move, then we can have to move, or we have to get locked up. The homelessness, what she just read, is full of lies. Hope House, Hope Connection, Love Well, Christian Services. Half of them employees are really rude to the homeless people. If they say anything cruelty to us and we reply, they want If they say anything cruelty to us and we reply, they want to bore you and call the police. So what she just read is full of lies. There's a lot of things going on in the Hope House that I can provide and tell y'all personally what is really going on, which I'm not going to put out in the public open. It's a lot of dirt that's going on in the Hope House. And it's not right. It's a lot of dirt going on in Hope Connection. It's not right. It's not professional. What they're saying and telling y'all in public eyes and public views in the community is BS. But behind closed doors, when you guys are not there, it's a whole different thing. Right is right, wrong is wrong. Respect is a two-way street. If you're going to come with us and work with us, treat us like we're human beings, not like we're dogs or dirt, like we're not nothing to them. And they're sitting there working on a second grant, they're not doing the right thing with the funds that is given to them. They're hell of a pickers and choosers on who they really do want to help. And as she's saying, locking up people for jail, several people have been locked up, several people have came back, several of them that have gained more than one place to stay. How I know? I used to be there in person, and I still know things what's going on. Right is right and wrong is wrong. And how can you just lock up one person and you're not locking up the director as well who has something to do with it also? So my thing of it is, how can you just sit up there and say one thing and propose to y'all one thing, write a letter saying one thing, and y'all are doing another behind closed doors, which is not professional? Thank you guys for your time, and please don't vote against it.
Hello, I'm Tracy Toops, 451 Roseback. Thank you, Chairman Green and fellow council members for hearing me today. Talking about the doing away with the separation entrance in regards to liquor stores, it's my understanding this was originally brought up to offer clarity to the Shreveport Police Department in order for them to better enforce the ordinances that they're supposed to enforce. The way I see it, the best way and option, aside from upending businesses that have been built and created in, in trying to abide by the current ordinance that is in place, is to make it to where people have to be 21 to come in. If you allow people under the age of 21 years old to come into your store, then you don't have to have a separate entrance. If you do, then you do have to have a separate entrance, and that's pretty plain and clear. The negative results, the net negative results that I see in doing away with a separate entrance, which I'll just kind of highlight some of the things that I've spoken to members of the council several times before, is the exposure of marketing of hard liquor to minors in a time where hard liquor is flavored and there's different flavors that would, are appealing to young people, unfortunately. It would result in the decrease of jobs in our area. I know us as business owners would most definitely have a decrease in jobs, salaries, and commissions. It would seemingly increase the burden of the Shreveport Police Department to monitor and police more venues or venues that are currently existing with larger parking lots that are more difficult to police. Theft, you know, I've been in this business for 20 years, my family's been in the business for 60 years. I consider our business to be one that people perceive that, and diligently, we diligently take care of our business. And in that regard, we do have to deter theft, and that is part of being in our retail business as much as any other retail business. One thing that I've heard brought up in the city council meetings is that they don't deal with underage theft. In my experience, I've never had the ability to check an ID of a shoplifter. But it would have no positive effect on our community to get rid of this, something that Shreveport does have positive going for it. It would be a net result of negative to change it. Common sense, especially in a time of increased crime, should tell us to keep the parameters around selling of hard liquor in our community. Thank you for your time. Are any questions? Thank you.
Hello, Michael Laban, 1298 Leonard Road, also a member of Thirfty Liquor Family. I've been a business owner here in Shreveport for over 28 years. I'm here to ask the City Council to please adopt a 21 and over clause on the entrance, keep the physical separation entrance on any place that allows underage people into their location. As Tracy said earlier, nobody wants young children getting, getting a hold of alcohol. Some other things that have happened, I think everybody remembers, if you lived here for a while, there was a lot of hardware stores in Shreveport, Bojor, they're all gone now. You know, the big stores come in, they've all shut down. Every one of y'all's districts has somebody in our company that lives in your district. When Bojor got rid of physical separation, it affected our sales, it affected the number of jobs, we could hire people. We had to cut our employees. That will happen in Shreveport. Each one of your districts will have people that were now unemployed because of removing the physical separation. We don't want that to happen. Whenever we build a new store, we use local people, we use local builders, we use local businesses and things like that. The new Brookshires is being built on, what is it, over by your house, I think?
North Ferry.
Yeah, North Ferry. That company's out of Texas. All that money's going, these big box stores are not interested in keeping the money here in Shreveport. We, as business owners, and not just Thirfty, but all the other mom-and-pop shops, we're invested in this city, we're invested in this town, we keep our money here, we spend our money here. The big stores, the money goes out. They're not looking to hire more people. If you go into a grocery store now, how many self-checkout lanes are there? There's more than regular checkout lanes. They don't want to hire people. We want to hire people and put them to work. Please help us keep that part of Shreveport going. Don't, don't put us underneath the big businesses. You will have every one of them come in and start selling liquor. The Dollar General over in Houghton has just applied for a liquor license. You'll have a liquor store on every corner, and you'll have kids going in there and being able to go in there anytime they want because you can't keep them out. At that point, the mom-and-pop stores might start selling bread and milk. We don't want kids in the liquor stores. We don't need them, there's enough business without them. Also, you were told something last time we were here, that Shreveport's the only city in the country that has separation, that's not true. Most states have laws that will not allow liquor stores to, to be part of a grocery store, things like, they have to be physically separated. That is, that is the norm, not the exception. And I know that liquor store delivery's coming up soon, just keep this in mind, we had, I had a phone conversation with delivery dudes just the other day, we're meeting with them this week. They told us that the ID responsibility is not on them. Somebody can load a fake ID and have the fake ID at the door, and delivery dude walks away from the responsibility. Just another little thing else to keep in mind. I thank you for your time and listening. If I could answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to add one thing about the delivery thing. The state law on delivery means that in order to deliver alcohol, you have to also be able to deliver food. So that limits who can actually deliver to people that are open to, well, the issue with GoPuff was that they wanted to be able to sell the rest of their items to people that were under 21, and that would have restricted their entire business models, which is people over 21.
Well, I was just making the point that, that these delivery companies, they don't take responsibility for the person actually receiving the product of being 21 or over. They, they don't care if they're 19.
So you're saying you have no interest in having, being a delivery vendor?
We could do that now, we choose not to.
No, you couldn't because you're right now, because of the separation, you can't have food in your premises.
Well, we're not looking to be in a delivery, but if the law's changed, delivery dudes contacted us and they, they want to deliver liquor using our company. And I specifically asked them, I said, who's responsible for, for the person receiving it, being of age? He said, well, that's on the liquor store. I said, well, how does that work? He goes, we have a dual ID program where they have to upload a picture of the ID, then have that ID at the, at the door when they deliver it. And I said, well, what if it's a fake ID? He goes, that's not on us.
So it's accurate that they could just contract with a delivery person who brings the food and the alcohol to separate vendors? Is that accurate?
Councilwoman Fuller, could you repeat your question?
Is it accurate that, that a private vendor of liquor could partner with a private vendor to deliver, and the delivery people are responsible for getting the food from somewhere else in order to deliver both the food and the alcohol together?
I'm not familiar with that provision. I know that the act that just passed that went into effect August 1st allows for delivery with food within a 20-mile radius. So I would assume that the business that's doing the delivery has to be a business that has an alcohol, has the alcohol and the food, not just kind of a...
That tracks with what I was assuming, but I wanted to just make sure that was correct.
I'll have to double-check, but my understanding of the act that just recently passed is that the business has to be providing a food service as well as alcohol, but I'll double-check.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just comment that I hope state law doesn't make it possible to deliver with anybody with a fake ID in a way that doesn't completely check the validity of the ID. If it does, then the liquor lobby has better lobbyists than...
I'm just telling you what the gentleman, and he represents delivery dudes, he's up in New York City, and there's two people in his company that deal with the alcohol side of it, and they've already contracted with some other cities in Shreveport, not Shreveport, I'm sorry, in Louisiana. I believe Baton Rouge, New Orleans area, some of those, that they already, they've already started working with, and they're planning on coming to Shreveport now. So I don't, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know all the laws, but they are planning on moving here, and I'm assuming that they would have done their research. I can't tell you for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll just, if I may, I'll just make this comment. I really, and I'll just let you sit down unless somebody else has a question for you. I don't, I don't have any concern about stores like Walmart and Brookshires selling to minors, I just, I just don't think that's going to happen. I am concerned about allowing, and I'm not, I'm not calling these names out to pick on these companies particularly, just the ones I know, stores like Family Dollar and Dollar General to sell liquor all over town. The benefit of the amendment that Councilman Butcher and I have offered again in my mind is that, you know, this is an intermediate step we can take to, to solve the problem that brought this to us in the first place, which is you got liquor stores that can't sell meat, cheese, potato chips to adults, and you can leave for another day the question whether you want to open up liquor sales to, well, to everywhere, to all stores. Once we let the horse out of the barn, once we approve large grocery stores and Walmart to sell liquor in Dollar General and Family Dollar, we can't take that back. Like, that, that door only swings one way. And so if you want to make an incremental change and then reevaluate sometime next term, that's, that seems to me to be the safer course for the council, but as in all things, the majority will control the outcome. Thank you.
Steve Pinkley, retired firefighter. Thank you for letting me come and speak. Before, on our insurance, it was either in-network or out-of-network. Now they're wanting, their plans that they were talking about are a three-tiered system, one being Ochsner's, second lower tier being Willis Knighton, and then of course your third tier is your out-of-network problems. Why would they make a second tier to make it more expensive for the city employees and the retired employees to go to the physicians and the hospitals that they were going to? It seems like there's no loyalty, no respect for those who have gone before and those that are here now. Willis Knighton also, I think, should not be considered a second tier. They have donated fire, medic units, they have given land for fire stations, they allow a lot of our training for our paramedics to be able to use their hospitals to get their training so that we can help y'all and the citizens of Shreveport. It just seems like it's unfair and not thinking of everybody else. Yes, I know they're saying there's more money that's going out that needs to be going out. Surely is there something else without making another tier and costing the employees and the retirees more money and possibly having to change physicians and hospitals to get the treatment that they need? Thank you.
Leo Stevenson.
Good afternoon, Council, Council Chairman Green. My name is Leo Stevenson, District Vice President for Brookshires Grocery Company. Today, we operate two nine-four service grocery stores throughout the city of Shreveport with two new stores under construction, and currently we plan on, we anticipate hiring about 300 new employees for this new facility. On Tuesday, I urge you to vote no on the Butcher-proposed amendment, or Nicholson-proposed amendment, and I urge your yes vote for ordinance 117. Members of the council, as recently as August 9th, you acknowledged that separate entry has been a dying slow dev. So let's get this done and let that Model T go. It's time, and, and give, give some of the responsible retailers, such as Brookshires, an opportunity to have a fair, fair, fair game in the industry. So thank you for your service for Shreveport, thank you for what you do.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm Virginia Pinkley. My husband's a retired firefighter. We own Medicare. It is going to affect us, how the Insurance Board votes, as to how our care will continue and our prices. Medicare supplements go in in October. Here we are again, this year, not knowing. I went to the meeting last week. They have no numbers, they have nothing in writing, and they're hoping to get it in sometime at the end of September. We didn't get a 13% raise. When we fill out our Medicare insurance where we're going, we don't get to change it and say, I didn't understand the form. They take what we say to begin with. We don't get a redo. So what you decide on is going to affect the lives of people that work for this city and families that had, these men worked two jobs when they worked because they didn't make enough money to support a family on what they made 30 years ago. So please, consider what you're doing now. Do we have enough time to make good decisions? No. When should this have been decided? When do we budget at our house? It's not the end of the year. So could you please let the next administration decide on this insurance debacle? I understand things go up, but you can't drop this in somebody's lap and say, well, here it is, and we needed to do something about it, and we decided to do it today. I was at the meeting Wednesday, it was clear as mud. So please consider the people... So please consider the people who've worked here before and still support the city. Thank you.
Barbara Sellers?
Good afternoon, members of council. Barbara Sellers, representing the Shreveport Firefighters Association Local 514. We were here a year ago in the same forum for the same discussion. Around this time, we all received the document stating that we could anticipate about a 5% increase on our premiums. Later to find out that it would be upwards of, for some upwards to be about 33%. And so we've been very proactive. We didn't just start here today on August 23rd to come before council. We started these discussions in our labor management meetings with our fire chiefs. We've had several fire chiefs over the last year, and each one of them diligently brought forward in the department head meetings what our questions were, whether it was the unfilled elected seats. And we understand coming off of COVID, there were some challenges there, but we're on the other side of that. So we just recently had one of those seats filled, and we understand there's now another seat that is vacant that will need to be filled. Much of the discussion that you're going to hear will be duplicative. The concerns you're hearing from the active and retirees are the same that I am hearing every day, and they're mounting. A lot of it is because of the fear and the anxiety of the unknown. And many of them have occupational disease that should have been on workman's comp under the presumptive statute that was pushed over to insurance, which we know increases those insurance premiums. If workman's comp would have been diligent in their response, then they would have been vetted appropriately. This is not new discussion. This is discussion that we've had with this administration in March of 20. We had this discussion with the previous administration, Mayor Tyler's administration. And subsequent to that, we have had these discussions about workman's comp not taking the claims in accordance to what the statute says. So here we are. We have the latter half of the year facing us. We have many people that are out here right now that are facing medical diagnoses that they are maneuvering through with uncertainty. And we're trying to bring those concerns some resolve. We sent a letter to the city administration and they did respond back and said there's been no decisions made. Chief Whitehorn has said that here today. But we are, in the last half of the year, we're two months out from, uh, open enrollment. By now, we should have, we would have hoped that we would have had the plans out there so our members could be educated about the plans, so they could sit down with their physicians and determine on multiple plans what's going to best fit their budgets and what their medical needs will require. And most importantly, if there is one of the major carriers that's not equally included and there is a fiscal penalty for choosing that, uh, medical facility, that absolutely impacts budget. This year has been unprecedented. We've got inflation that each one of us personally are dealing with. Gas has been over $5 a gallon. And we understand that it costs money to provide insurance for our members, but I will say that it is, the cost and the human element absolutely have to be taken in consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Scott Wolverton?
Scott Wolverton, uh, good afternoon, Chief Whitehorn, honorable council members. It's good to be back before you today. I come today to speak as a retired firefighter with over 28 years of experience on Shreveport Fire Department. Also speak today on behalf of all the retired firefighters, police officers, city employees, as well as those that are active employees. My concern today is the health insurance decisions that are presently being made by the Health Care Trust Fund Board and the impact those decisions will have on active and retired city employees who receive health care from the Willis Knighten Health System. Most city employees and retirees receive their health care from Willis Knighten, a local hospital system that continues to invest back into the public safety for this city and many other community projects that enhance the quality of life for all of our Shreveport citizens. I've been advised that Willis Knighten provides health care covers for over 60% of city employees and retirees. For active employees, the plan voted on by the board places Willis Knighten in a tier-two position, which means that employees will pay more out-of-pocket expense to keep their already established relationship with the Willis Knighten doctors and services. For retirees, the Medicare plans being offered do not have present contracts with the Willis Knighten Health System. These active employees serve every day to meet the mission of the city. And they deserve to be able to choose between the three hospital systems here in Shreveport in an equitable way that does not put more of a financial burden on them. These retirees have served and they've answered the call every time they've been requested. Many being exposed to hazards today that are considered by law to be occupational diseases. They have earned the ability to be able to choose their health care without having to give up their continuity of care with their Willis Knighten doctors and hospitals and keep it without creating a more of a financial burden on them. I respectfully ask the board to reconsider their decision and carry on the same health plan that was established in 2022 for the 2023 calendar year. I also respectfully ask this council and this administration to support, to support that decision also. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Vernon Moore?
My name is Vernon Eugene Moore. I'm the president and owner of VIP Taxi Service LLC. I've been approached by a present owner of a taxi co, club company in Longview, Texas to purchase the cabs and telephone number owned by my company. Not my company, just the cabs and telephone number. When the prospective purchaser inquired about applying for a vehicle-for-hire business permit, she was told by the vehicle-for-hire office that she could not use the trade name nor the colors present on the cabs. The Shreveport City ordinance does not allow the vehicle-for-hire office under the direction of the chief of police to buy, to, to borrow any color scheme nor trade name from an acquiring company only when there's a new applicant and they're in competition with a present company. Likewise, neither does the letter from the Shreveport Police Department dated March 23rd, 2022, addressed to Ms. Carol Moore, in which the vehicle-for-hire permit was revoked indefinitely for VIP. It addressed any restrictions related to the trade name or color scheme in the event of a sale of the company's cabs and telephone number. The only reason a prior taxi cab company had to change its color scheme and trade name was due to the results of a civil trial and is not contained in the city ordinances for the city of Shreveport. There was no one harmed physically or mentally by the alleged violations against VIP Taxi Services LLC. I request that you adhere to the city ordinances for the city of Shreveport and allow the trade name and color scheme of VIP Taxi Services LLC to continue if the acquiring company so wishes. Section 10242 about application, part B4, talks about keeping a new company from using a color scheme to compete with a present company, not to acquire a present company. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I ask the city attorney to review this gentleman's complaint and give the police department appropriate advice.
Be back. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry, I asked the city attorney to, to consider what you said to us today and to advise the police department as he thinks appropriate.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, uh, we will have executive appointments on tomorrow. There are no items on the concerned agenda for introduction or to be adopted today. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation, please?
Resolution 107, authorizing the submission of the 2022 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Resolution 108, stating the city of Shreveport's approval of amendment number five to the trust indenture of the Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority. Resolution 109, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for a request for Anderson Island restroom bid RFQ number 22-539. Resolution 110, authorizing the marshal of the city court of Shreveport to receive in addition to the salary paid to him by the city of Shreveport the same fees as are payable to the constables of, of Justice of the Peace Courts, up to 50% of the salary paid by the city of Shreveport. Resolution 111, honoring Ashley Murphy Wilson for her outstanding artistic achievement in ballet in the city of Shreveport. Resolution 112, a resolution in remembrance of Devin Dwayne Myers. Resolution 113, dedicating the 3,200 block of Logan Street in honor of Robert Tony Rose.
Are there any questions or comments on any of these items? If not, um, Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to September 13th, 2022?
Resolution 114, authorizing the mayor to enter into a corporate endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Symphony Orchestra. Resolution 115, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Opera. Resolution 116, authorizing the mayor to enter into a corporate, in, cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Metropolitan Ballet. Resolution 117, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo relative to the city of Shreveport's guaranteed income program. Resolution 118, amending the pay plan for classified employees to address ki, uh, pay compressions. Resolution 119, authorizing the mayor to submit loan application, Form 108 and accompanying, accompanying documents for water tank rehabilitation to the Department of Health on behalf of the city of Shreveport for the purpose of placing this project on the comprehensive priority list for funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund. Resolution 120, authorizing the mayor to submit loan application Form 108 and accompanying documents for lead water lines to the Department of Health on behalf of the city of Shreveport for the purpose of placing this project on the comprehensive priority list for funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund. Resolution 121, authorizing the mayor to submit Form, to submit loan application Form 108 and accompanying documents for the Amis Water Treatment Plant Transmission piping to the Department of Health on behalf of the city of Shreveport for the purpose of placing this project on the comprehensive priority list for funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of these items or comments? Thank you. If not, Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of order not to be adopted prior to September 13th, 2022?
Ordinance 122, amending the 2022 general fund budget, uh, and I believe, excuse me just a minute. Okay, that was a different one, I'm sorry. Ordinance 123, amending the 2022 capital project, project fund budget. Ordinance 124, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 125, to amend section 38 dot 5 dash 3 of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to the procedure for appointment of hearing officers to the city's environmental court. Ordinance 126, zoning case number 22 dash 141 dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located north side of Bergkoon's Industrial Loop, approximately 1,700 feet east of Kingston Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from C2 Carter Commercial Zoning to C dash 3, uh, General Commercial Zoning District. Ordinance 127, zoning case number 22 dash 144 dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located west side of Sanford Avenue between Jennings Street and Woodgrove, Woodgrove Street, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R dash 2 multi-family residential zoning districts to IC Industrial Campus Zoning District. Ordinance 128, zoning case number 22 dash 145 dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located east side of Wallace Lake Road, approximately 100 feet south of Took Drive, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R dash 1 dash 7, single-family residential district to C dash 1 neighborhood commercial zoning district. Ordinance 129, zoning case number 22 dash 147 dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located west side of Southern Avenue, approximately 130 feet south of Hoodlish, Hopeless Street, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Louis, uh, from C dash 2 Carter Commercial Zoning District to C dash 2 Carter Commercial Zoning District, HUD.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items? Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance number 104, amending the 2022 general fund budget. This particular ordinance, I believe, will be replaced by the ordinance I previously read concerning the marshal's salary. Uh, and I'm, I believe it'll be asked to draw that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Ordinance 108, to revise chapter 78, article 5, standard for construction of parking lots of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to construction of parking lots. This particular ordinance, uh, will be postponed, uh, to ask, be postponed tomorrow if y'all agree. We're working with the MPC and they have similar language that will be presented to the MPC for approval, and they will be presenting an, uh, an ordinance to the council reflecting, uh, that change for the parking lots.
Yes.
Ordinance 109, to amend various articles and section of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating and revising the regulations for political signs. Ordinance 111.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I know that the previous meeting, it was the pleasure of the council to postpone this legislation until December. However, I would iterate that this, the provision as it stands right now in the books is in violation of the Constitution. So I would encourage the council to, uh, adopt this legislation that is currently on the agenda.
Ordinance number 111, amending the 2022 Water and Sewerage Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 112, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 113, to amend section 10 dash 4 of the Code of Ordinances relative to reports by the chief of police and to include language concerning the powers of the chief of police to make rules and regulations. Ordinance 114, to add language to section 10 dash 8 relative to class A and class B permits. Ordinance 115, to add language to section 10 dash 52, which concerns the term and renewal of retail and manufacturer permits. Ordinance 116, to amend section 10 dash 67, which concerns the issuance or denial of alcohol beverage handling. alcohol beverage handling employee cards, to include language concerning transfer and surrender of permits upon change of ownership or termination of business. Ordinance 117, to repeal section 10 dash 84 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Ordinance 118, to amend section 10 dash 103 of the Code of Ordinances concerning grounds for suspension or revocation of alcohol beverage permits and include language concerning the emergency closure of an establishment by law enforcement. Ordinance 119, to amend section 10 dash 133 concerning the hearing and notice of appeals process for all permits denied, suspended, or revoked or otherwise provided with respect thereto. To amend section, ordinance 120, to amend section 10 dash 186 concerning the security requirements for digital camera systems. Ordinance 122, 121, I'm sorry, to amend various articles and section of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of revising the buffer requirements for short-term rental properties. Ordinance 110, case number 22 dash 122 C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located southeast corner of East Kings Highway and East 70th Street, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R A Rural Agricultural Zoning District to C dash 4 Heavy Commercial Zoning District.
Are there any questions or comments on any of these items?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Have someone explain ordinance 120, Police Department?
120. Go to 120.
Okay. Is she for 120?
No. Let's see. She work for the city?
Ma'am?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Do you work for the city?
No, I'm a man in the street with y'all.
Oh, we've passed those items, ma'am. Is there anyone here from Police Department that can explain?
You want to talk about the digital camera systems?
Yes.
To ensure that all bars are included under this requirement?
Yep.
Which ordinance was it for?
120.
That was the language for the... It was an "and" in there that just needed to be cleaned up.
So we, so digital cameras are required for?
On-premise consumption and packaged stores.
Okay.
Well, packaged stores, the point-of-sales, entry-exit, parking lots.
Okay.
So we just change an order two to clarify?
Yes, it was a "and".
And they're required to be active?
Yes, they have to back up thirty days, an hour after close.
Okay.
The only thing that was changed was the "and" put in there.
Okay.
While y'all are up here, Mr. Chairman, if I may, tell us about ordinance 113, which would delegate to the chief of police the authority to make rules and regulations around the alcohol code?
The 113 is the, 10 dash 4 is pretty much for public safety. So for example, we have a shooting at a nightclub or something, as long as the chief or the police has the crime scene, once we release it, we don't have any powers to pretty much say, y'all can't open right back up. So this gives the chief's the power to affect any kind of public safety measurements to reopen, such as, hey, you need to get security, or you need to get a camera here before you can reopen, or you need to get metal detectors before you may reopen.
Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to giving the police chief some additional authority in that regard, but I'll note for my colleagues that this, this broadly would give the chief of police, whoever that may be now or in the future, the authority to make rules and regulations without coming to the council. They could be appealed to the council if, if an affected person didn't like what had happened, but I just, I just don't know exactly how we draw the line between what we ought to delegate to, to law enforcement officers, even the chief officer, and what we ought to reserve to this body as the legislative body responsible for the city. But I think that merits probably some further thought, in my opinion.
This would be on an emergency basis, but it's still within the framework of Chapter 10.
But it doesn't say emergency basis, I guess, at least in the language I'm looking at. It just says generally that the police chief has the power to make rules and regulations. And if I'm misreading it, I stand to be corrected, but I don't see that in the, the language that would be added to our code.
So in ordinance 118, that'd be 10 dash 103, that would be the emergency closure. So that was pretty much the basis if they needed to reopen before we can get, schedule a meeting.
So I'd like some additional input from the city attorney on this, not necessarily on the record right now, but before the vote tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On ordinance 110, Mr. Jean? And I'm assuming that the two ladies out here that wanted to speak were speaking on 110 today, is that right? I don't know what happened, but I apologize. Come tomorrow, you can speak on it tomorrow, but just be sure and get your slip in before 3:00. Okay, Mr. Jean, tell me a little bit about this. I was absent because of illness last time when we postponed this. Tell me kind of what, do we have, do we have any kind of site plan or anything on this? The way that the lot is shaped is a little concerning to me. It goes down and kind of goes up against the bayou and then runs in, and we're rezoning that whole tract. Do we have any idea where that building is going to sit?
Yes, they've shown that to us. It's not a part or link to the rezoning.
Okay.
But it's, it's not the entire tract that gets rezoned. There was a revised legal that limited it to just the footprint area of the, of the site where the business will be going, is the collision center.
Will it be back towards the BMW dealership, or will it be back towards 70th Street?
It's, it's back towards the dealership.
Okay. As far as the way the building is going to be, is it going to be a metal building? Is it going to be, and I know this all gets in the site plan, but these are the questions that are being asked by the neighborhood associations that are actually in Councilman Nicholson's district, but this kind of directly impacts both of us. Is this building, is it going to look similar to the BMW dealership, or is this just going to be a metal building? What's, does this company own another, I looked them up, they own something in North Bossier, is that correct?
Yeah, they have locations in the region.
And they're out of Texas?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the building up in North Bossier, I've seen it, it looks pretty much like a car dealership. I mean, if you're riding up that bent road where they have all the car dealerships, it looks like a continuation of the car dealership. I'm assuming that the site plan is going to make sure that it's concurrent with the way the dealership looks.
Well, I'm not sure that, we don't have anything in the code that actually says you have to match something that's nearby. We do have, we do have standards in the UDC that require a particular mix of, there are certain materials that are not allowed to exceed a certain percentage.
Okay.
Like a full metal building would not be allowed, that you'd have, you have to have a mixture of different types of materials, you have to be able to break up the facade if it's so long. So those things are taken care of and through the site plan review. But as far as like having just a freestanding metal building out there, the code doesn't really allow you to do that.
I guess my concern is, you know, that's a, that's a very well-maintained area through there, and I don't want to see just a metal building thrown up that, you know, and I'm assuming they'll have to do the landscaping and everything else that's typically required.
Yes.
I think, I think that if we could have some assurance that, that this is going to be closer to the dealership and not right there at that intersection, one of my concerns is the lot is so narrow coming in there at 70th Street that getting in and out is going to be very, very difficult and blocked traffic, because there's a lot of traffic there at 8:00 in the morning going to Captain Shreve and everything else right in there, and I would hate to see them put a drive right there coming out of the north part of that property, so.
There was a pre-application conference that, where the driveway was discussed, the location of the driveway. I think at one time that that was the jurisdiction, or at least a thought to be the jurisdiction of DOT, but I believe that they have, that's being reviewed now by Michael Irland, and he would be in charge of making sure that's okay. It seems like it came close to lining up. I'll be glad to send you the PAC notes and the, the plan that was reviewed as far as the PAC conference, the pre-application conference that shows the layout.
If it lined up with Regal Drive, where Regal Drive comes into East Kings Highway, where there's already a red light, I think that would be beneficial.
I believe that's what it is. I, I'll need to consult it, but I'd be glad to forward that to you before the vote tomorrow.
Okay, all right. And then just for some clarification, since we have two property owner association people here that are actually in the Captain Shreve area, the way that this particular property sits, that's why none of the homeowners were notified, even though they're relatively close, since it's kind of out in the middle of the field, that's, that's why they were not on the notification list.
That's great, but we do send out, we do send out notifications to homeowners associations normally in, in the area, so I'll have to look and see.
I don't believe they got one. So they weren't able to participate in the, in the neighborhood participation, and I think that's, that's why I'm asking these questions here, where they, where they'll kind of know what went on in that neighborhood, but they, they did not know anything about the neighborhood participation.
Okay.
So, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jean.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just if I may, Councilwoman Fuller asked a question earlier regarding third-party vendors. I did provide that language to her as it relates to third-party vendors and the enumerated rules that they have to comply with as it relates to the state. I just wanted to make, just kind of clarify what I stated earlier, that there is a, there is an allowance for third-party vendors as it relates, and if any other council member needs that statute, I'll, I'll be happy to forward it to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. She printed it out.
If you'd just send me by email, I appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed today from the table? Thank you. We have no property standards, AVO appeal to consider today. We have no MPC or ZVA appeals to consider tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk? Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report? We have a request from the city attorney to go into executive session to discuss the following case, Angela Wilson, ET ALV COS, ET AL, First Judicial District Court, now get 586088 dash A. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Bowman, that we go into executive session. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote. Thank you all for coming, and at this time, we would ask that you would clear the chain.